Staying on order, discussion of regional park options for just games and voting.
Turn it over?
Turn it over.
Alright. So follow up to our previous meeting, joint park council meeting, um we we uh put in a page that we gathered at me and developed three main concepts. And does everybody have, does everybody have, I guess just let me explain a lot of things in the paper here, but really there's only three main concepts. You'll see some of them have a, there's three main concepts and then the front page that you, that you have there. The front page that you have looks like this right here. That's just an overall view of property all from that a little bit. And then there's option one on the bottom here, option one, option two, and option three. And with each option, there's also a second sheet that has some paint shading on it. And uh my paint shading is just a potential phase one or possibly, possibly phase one option. And that's for discussion purposes, we'll talk about that later tonight. Nothing special, very easily changed and it's just, just for all here to get to the thoughts, discussions going. So that's yeah, we have, basically we have seven sheets of paper in your packet, and there's one more that I handed out that everybody should have. That on the bottom is option three B to Boyd. That is a same thing as option three, same, same layout, same concept except for an alternative phase one option for phase one, for discussion purposes. Questions on that? If not, then basically what we want to do tonight is review these concepts, we'll go over, go over one by one and just briefly, Josh will briefly kind of lay out some of the different facets that we developed in each concept. Get your thoughts and input on that. And then the second thing to discuss tonight is possibilities for where, where to start. With where, which area to concentrate on first as far as construction goes. Which, which area do you feel is the most important and which you want to start on? Try to come with consensus on that. So first thing to discuss and kind of consensus on is sort of what option you like best and mix and match different options. You can take pieces from one option and put it into the other and do that. We intentionally try to make sort of every, every asset or every, every piece of every option a little different or a little different layout, just to give you the most feel or the different, most, most number of options available to you per, per view. So it's intended on, on wages that pulling the pieces from the different options. And then based on your input tonight, we would work on developing one final concept with the phase one showing on that. And then we would further define a fitting of probable cost or a cost estimate for that phase one as well as for the development of the entire park. The more detailed estimate would be more on, on kind of what you would look at concentrating on sort of. And then that would go, go forth if you decide to proceed with that, it would go forth to your, your park commissioner, your council if you decide to do that and for, for final approval. Final approval to plan. Not necessarily approval to proceed with construction in one phase, just more approval on the concept. So that's our, that's our goal for tonight. If anybody else has anything else that you want us to cover, we can certainly do that. Okay, everybody?
Well, I got two other options, but one for Christmas house lighting and printing and industrial placement. We can do that.
Okay, okay. Christmas lighting and what was the other one?
Placement, printing and prices of placements.
Placements, okay, okay.
So we can do that at the end.
Sure.
Do that.
Good. Then now with that, I'll just start off on the first option or first op, first page you have in the sheet here, the overview of the park property. We discussed a little bit last time how we're the park situated and the property that's around the park. So we developed this map here, this is to help out a little bit and show. So the blue here is a, is a park property, city park. There's a parcel mill here, that's the Jim Curzon property. There's a household theater on that property there right now, so our pro, our park property goes around that. This, uh, this piece down here is the existing Rolling Metals Development, these are the areas developed. Then this layer sheeted area right here is currently on park, uh, park, park, park field. But that is all part of what the preliminary plat area was for Rolling Metal Development. So when this development came in, the developers submitted a preliminary plat and kind of what I'd call a rough, rough plan for roads and utilities and lots in this entire development moving this area right here. So there's been a plan developed for this existing single family residential as well as some multifamily towards the north, is that right, park? Is that some multifamily in the park?
That's right.
Then we got this piece of property right here, it's the root property. That is currently, uh, is a park set, uh, located right here on their 12th. And then much of this area here is kind of lowland. The creek that runs through Rolling Metals runs through, just on the west side of the park property, runs through this like this, runs through, uh, the root property and continues on along the flats. A lot of this is wooded, lowland area, the way it was just based on very old. Then we did just identify more of the areas backing up to the north here, that is the school district property named the School of Criminals. We highlighted a section in between here for consideration of future property access with acquisition for, uh, for connection to the park and school district. That could be any form, it could be a narrow strip plan, it could be, we envisioned it to be some sort of a narrow strip plan, whether it be, um, just a trail connection or a street and trail connection. Any questions on that? There's no further, no questions on that, then Josh come up and he can read through, read through options. Starting with option one on the bottom there.
Can you guys see these at all?
Do you, should we move up closer?
Can you kind of follow on the pronounced field? So option one, um, was kind of looking at how it, one, how to get fit. The two things that we kind of kept in throughout the entire thing was how to fit, uh, high school baseball field or regulation, you know, we play baseball field, and then a little league or softball field on the site. So throughout those two entities, in some form or fashion, are in each of the three concepts. There may be more or less on some of them, but those, you know, at least one of each of those. And the other things we tried to look at were tennis courts were mentioned as one of the, of the items we wanted to include. Obviously we need parking in some way of getting in and out of the site. We looked at playground feature, more of a regional playground, basketball court or basketball courts. Kind of multi-purpose there. And then the other larger item was green space that maybe could be used as soccer or, you know, other type of field sport. And then also the satellite fire station or like a civic center. So those are kind of the, the backbone, I guess, that we use for each of the three concepts. So option one, looked at coming up Aspen Lane and around the whole lane, extending that north, creating a larger parking lot to the west of the current farmstead, and then developing that league field and softball kind of in tandem with one another. And then around the concessions and restroom facility. After getting that in, the potential softball league field or I guess Prairie Meadow area, kind of up on the northwest corner, isn't a lower section. So, you know, could be developed in the future, but wouldn't have to be. In that case, it would be something that could be used in that type of capacity, but wouldn't have to be. And especially, um, you know, if it's really wet spring, you, you may not be able to play on it. Or definitely not the entire field, so that's kind of an influx. Trying to keep the, the existing field that was done as part of that, I think was for each Eagle Scout, Eagle Scout project. And then just making some improvements on it to make it easier to, if you're actually looking at games. The satellite fire station kind of building off of County Road 12. Basically so it would have that presence along the road, and then they'd also be able to get in and out of the site fairly easy. Have the tennis courts in there as well, so we could have the, a parking lot access to it. People could easily get to those to use them. Playground also, tried to keep it fairly close to the, to the neighborhood. And then we tried to work in soccer fields as we could in the remaining space. Just because that's kind of the over, the unprogrammed space, but that, that we could try to fit in there. And then the like U-10, U-6, U-8 is basically the, the, the age to like you under, under six year or underage or under 10. It was kind of just the sizing, we have different sizes for the different age groups. So I think is an indication on that. Okay. Option two, kind of some similar things. Whereas we have the tail kind of going through the middle of the site on option one, we route it off to the west side on option two. We shift the ball fields a little bit further north, so we could actually get in some field sports closer to the south edge of the, of the property, I guess more on the middle edge of the property, but closer to the parking lot. We route the playground, basketball courts, so they're a little bit closer to the parking lot. So things really kind of focus more around the parking area in this one in part two. And we also introduced the multi-civic center, which could be senior center, you know, some rec, indoor rec. Any number of things, you know, city offices, fire station maybe attached to. So those are kind of the larger changes on that one. There's also a kind of a ghosted hockey arena or outdoor rink. Cause that was something else we talked about is how to possibly try to fit that onto the site. And then the only other big thing is we have a, kind of a small parking area all the way up to the north, basically facilitate trail use for bird watching or photography or anything, it would be a more passive use of the site. And then option three, on this one, we, we got to talk in the office and we decided we needed to have the one that showed movement all the way through. Really tried to figure out how we can make that work. Again, really with those ball field, just the size that they think of, trying to make that work. And so those reorient and are kind of tucked to the north and east edge of the property. So that we allow for comfortable use of the, of the sidewalk through the trail kind of hucks that with some different loops off of that. Breaking the parking lot into smaller parking lots that still function to have enough space for the, the capacity if, if both fields are being used at once. Other than not a big, large piece of either the two minutes or, or concrete or gravel. Then off of that, having a regional playground up with the fields, but then also have a smaller playground down kind of near the civic center and basketball tennis courts. And then try to fit the extra spaces left with soccer or field or maybe hockey rink outdoor, maybe a dog park in there. Try to get as many of the program elements we talked about in as possible. I know we also talked about an outdoor swimming pool. We did look up, or at least I found a study that was done, it was in California, but it was 2013. Kind of showed some, some rough costs and it was shown probably eight to 10 million. So just kind of a range, and I know when Ames and Iowa did their, it was a, it was a aquatic center. So it has a pool and it also has a, kind of like a lazy river in it. So it was close to 10.6 million, I think those all constructed, but that kind of gives you a price range for a municipal sized pool. And that's construction, so that doesn't include the, you know, the yearly maintenance. And I've got some different numbers on that as well, but just kind of throwing that out there. I think we'd also looked at miniature golf. I don't have costs on that, but it usually runs between, an 18 hole miniature golf course usually runs between 20,000 and 22,000 square feet. So I think it was roughly somewhere between U-6 and U-8. It was U-8 and U-10, anyway, it was somewhere between.
I think it's between 10 and 18, is our civic center that we have gone in there, just for relationships, right, around 10,000 square feet.
Yeah, and then what did you found, we looked up to how the neighboring communities size wise?
Yeah, so as far as the, as far as the community center, or I guess, we're talking civic center in here. I did look at all this, the discussion and, and you guys are probably familiar with the Monticello community center as well as the Delano facility. I was able to make contact with both of those facilities. The Delano facility is 16,000 square feet. Let me grab my notes here quick.
Sad for the rec center that's part of the high school.
The maker center.
The Delano facility? It's where their city offices are, the senior center?
Oh, the senior, okay.
Yeah, yeah, so, so it's their, it was built in 2003, 16,000 square feet, and that's what houses their city hall, their council chambers, their senior center, a couple of meeting rooms. And, um, so it does not have a recreative senior center. That, they can open up their, like their council chambers and their, their senior center to one big room. They can seat about 250, 250 people in there. Like banquet style, or if you put them like theaters down, like road to road seating, no tables, they can fit 350 people. That was constructed at a price of about $3 million furnished, basically on cost. So that just like per square foot, that's about $185 per square foot, finished square foot back in 2003. And then the Monticello facility is ginormous. It's 91,000 square feet. That includes, that includes a pool, aquatic center, I think they have in there, gymnasium, fitness center, climbing wall, National Guard is also in there, the senior center, city hall, some meeting rooms, locker rooms, restrooms, rental rooms to, to rent out for meetings and such, a banquet facility. Yeah, so that's kind of the grand deals, everything in different ways.
Some of those rooms are double duty, like the council chambers opens up into a bigger room that becomes a banquet room that, you know.
And that would be probably a little over, what do we think, probably 210 per square foot?
Yeah, I, yeah.
What I found for costs, which usually has a starting spot, is about 150, 200 a square foot, depending on, you know, whether you want to, if you want a Cadillac, if you want a, something less like a, you know, just a standard Ford, cut up and point where that's at, so. But theirs is a really nice and very large facility, so.
What did you say this size was?
About somewhere between 10 and 11, thousand square feet.
And that's both of those buildings drawn in, or the, what would it, the satellite fire station?
Correct.
That's what, oh, yeah. What, what's this one, Wendy?
I think it's like 3,500, 3,500, 600.
60, 80, 90, actually I, I did, I did real quick, I just did a quick aerial measurement and I came up with about 70 feet by 80 feet, and well, there should be 5,600 square feet.
That's fire barn and everything.
No. Just with that, yeah, and then about 60, the fire barn was measuring 20 by 80.
Cause I think our land service is only like 3,500 or 600 square feet.
Oh, really? So what's the comment of this? I came up with about right around 10, 11, but Wendy's numbers are different.
That's our more impressive.
Like I said, mine was based off of the aerial photo of the on the.
I'm only giving you.
You're probably.
I'm only giving you like this rule of 35.
That, the kitchen, not the.
Yeah, that's the whole building.
Yeah, so.
Be usable or, yeah, function, unique space, so. So that was really quick. Any questions off of that?
So here, that's the campus. I know we kind of got discussed a little bit in the initial meeting, and I thought I'd just miss a little quickly too. We talked about the other, you said you were the study.
Yeah, which I can, I can share. It was, uh, it was done in the community of California, and I think it was finished January of this year. So it was, you know, fairly accurate numbers. But what they did was they looked at three different configurations. One's just a pool, one of the, uh, like two pools, a smaller, and then a, you know, a larger pool, like lap pool. And then one with lap pool and then like a lazy river built in, so it's more of aquatic center. That one was coming in at a little over 10 million. The other two are about 8.1. And as part of that study, they also did a, like a yearly maintenance and then also kind of projected numbers. And I think the one for aquatic center was projected to make a thousand dollars a year maybe. And all the others were gonna lose pretty significantly.
The reason I ask is because I talked to city treasurer or city accountants, the silver lake and silver lake, which is on comparable size. It's got a nice little pool there.
Yeah.
And it cost them $400,000 to build that in 2006. And they said they put in about 26, 30,000 dollars a year for management. So it seemed like it was quite a leap from 400 grand to 2006.
Yeah, and I don't know what, how large that, it may be the.
That's just a plain pool, just a pool. What Josh is talking about is a full-fledged aquatic center.
Okay.
So that, that includes, you know, the, the zero entry pool, the, the.
Slide.
Yeah, water slide and all that.
Cause we did bother to put up the survey, the survey came back, it was, I don't want to keep entering it, but at the same time, we.
Yeah, and I can definitely give you that, I can give you that PDA with the picture, just so for reference, if you want to look through it.
If we were to do a pool, do you have, like for ADA standards, do you have to do a zero entry? Or do the new ones require a zero entry or not?
It's a good question.
Yeah, I don't know with all the new standards.
I don't know what the, the jurisdictional body would be on that.
Yeah, I don't know.
If it's a public pool, I would almost guarantee that we'd probably have to have an accessible entry to it.
We'd have to follow.
I would think so.
Which they have in Silver Lake.
But that would mean you have to.
Change the way business is.
No, I don't have a policy this year.
They have a zero entry pool.
Is it zero entry?
Which I'd probably just do one, one piece of it.
Yeah, I didn't know, I mean.
So yeah, there is a, there's a big difference, big difference in numbers there. If you're talking just a plain, just where rectangular pool, we can hit you up about a cost.
And I guess they must have like a concession or like locker rooms or whatever, shower rooms.
This is basic, but you know, but you know, they, they, you know, yeah, I didn't, there's no study down. The treasurer and I don't know, they're in ministry right now, so they, they both feel like it's a, it's a, it's got an asset to it. That's probably, that's all.
Would you say their yearly costs were?
They, the maintenance station, she said 26 to 30,000.
Does that include their wages and stuff for their summer health? I would think it would probably be, you know, year, I mean, year round maintenance is insane.
Well, probably it's open from May to.
Yeah, it's open from May to late May.
Right, and then you have probably 15 guards that are committed out.
Yeah, and you, you hire.
You have to have supervisor, then you have to have guards.
But then, I don't know why she would have told me that, and she said there's 26 to 30,000 dollars in.
I would almost think that'd be.
Guards, so.
I would think that'd be the guards too.
Probably make it 12 of smaller.
Yeah, they don't make it much on kids, high school.
Yeah, we can, we can do a little bit more on that. I mean, I think it's something that we, I guess we want, one, we, it's something that we want to add. I think there's enough flexibility, minus five.
Well, I know the other thing we talked about too was, was leaning kind of more towards like indoor pool sometime cause we have such a shortened season here to do the outdoor pool. We, I know when we talked about the pool last time, we talked again about checking for an indoor pool.
Somebody gonna check with this pool now to see if, where they were at with, if there was possible sharing of pool facilities. I might be completely, it was like.
One thing I'd say is they're, they're completely, I mean, indoor pools, they sink like chemicals, they're unusable in summer if they're so hot, they're standing like chemicals all day. I mean, summer, and outdoor pools are completely different. Plus, you know, you know, Jell-O has one water town, it's a fun one, it's a tiny, there's no, that's very handsome. They, they, outdoor pools are unique, I, I don't want to come off the pool back here, I don't, I don't hold a socket.
A lot of them have smaller towns.
But it's an asset, I mean, I just think it's something unique that would, you know, would be with visibility and, you know, they got little, very, very cool, you know, solar lake, they're nice, but they're just nice little. And then there's one thing that if you look, if you look, they're busy all the time. So you drive, you drive by parks all the time there. Again, that's something, I don't, I don't want to completely support, but I did, I did do, I just went, went ahead and called him. I didn't call him earlier.
Anything else? What's your, what's your dumb reaction looking at the tree? Is there anything on them, we just, I hate it? Or you're really like, we both are, yeah.
Would you explain the advantage of having that street going through the whole park? Because that would become a street, right?
Yes, yeah. The, the one, well, it depends on function of it. The one reason it doesn't go straight through, and we actually tried to add the bin into it.
But, but it does.
It's too, basically traffic coming, so, you know, try to keep it less, cause it is within a park. But it allows easier access to parking, so you don't necessarily have to have a large parking lot like on one or two. You can split it up into smaller pieces, so they are less visible to the recreational user, but aren't, but are still, are still very handy. And allows a little bit easier access to the different areas of park. But the, you know, the one thing, like you mentioned, to keep in mind is that, you know, if it's connected in, people will potentially cut, do it as a cut through. So something definitely, you know, even at this level, something we even thought of, but something if it could forward in some configuration would have to be a consideration.
Even if it was, it wouldn't be like a 66 foot road, right?
No, you have a.
Smaller road or.
I mean, 26 foot wide road.
Driveway kind of thing, more access.
But you still couldn't get, you know, you still get people.
Yes.
I mean, I like it because I think it makes access a lot easier for.
Like law enforcement checking on cars, it's easier for them.
Public works, law enforcement.
But, but there's always that concern that, you know, people are gonna use it as a quick bypass. The other part of that is where they're trying to get to. If this would eventually connect up to the school, possibly if there are kids going to school from here. I guess could that be more of an issue perhaps on coming from here and then, you know, trying to head north, they're just gonna go to the quick.
Yeah, I don't see it being a big cut through road if it, if it doesn't go north of there. Cause that road on the, the road on the north. Cause that road on the, the road on the north side would eventually keep going west and connect in to that, um, system of roads. Yeah, put that over there, that really that was flat area there. So if you just look at that, really not really cut through much of anything.
I mean, it just depend on if there's a destination over to the west that people down here wanna get to. So that would be easier for them, and then they would use it to support that. But knowing that on the front end, you can do things to inhibit that or curb that.
Even if it someday connects to the school, it won't be so bad, cause we keep the kids on, on, well.
And it's a middle school, it's a middle school, so there aren't people driving and driving down it.
You can't get to school without going on the highway.
Alright, so looking at the street, um, what other things kind of pop out for the work that?
I have a general question. Um, I noticed you have the basketball and tennis courts on here. Are you going to eliminate the existing ones? Are you gonna, so you'll have another set of facilities?
We only have the one tennis court right now, and it gets you in the summer to use a lot. We've had people ask for more courts.
I know that another, I think the last, we also talked about. If, how many courts, I can't remember how many courts are in city parks.
Just one.
Um, cause I know another train of thought too was if we have courts in one spot, then there's always that opportunity, if there's like a splash pad or something. To incorporate more centrally located and then having a few more courts out, so that doesn't really answer your question. But that's another train of thought that could, um, you know, occur, but I know that definitely there was the desire to have more than they could.
And we don't really have any basketball courts now, like we need some parking lots. With some hoops there, so, you know, it's, if the cars are there, they can't play basketball. It'd be nice to have a place for them to go.
What is the general cost involved in?
I think we're looking, well, it kinda depends on level. Um, but if you're looking at this one, we're looking at, if it was gonna be league, you know, developed a league play, then you'd have, um, the lighting fencing. You know, have a full tilt, um, probably looking at four hundred and a half million, somewhere in there.
And using. No, no, they're, they're one point three million. If you look on your sheets that have the pink.
Yeah.
Down here and the, right below at where it says Aspen Lake, the, the phase one, they're just, just over one point three million.
And, and we'll get to that. And that number is including the, the ball field, the roadway that's actually the pink. The, I think thirty trail sections included, so that's a little bit more than just the field, but the, the field would be included in that number.
And how much did you say that recreation center would, would be in comparison? About the same amount of money or?
Which recreates though, like the ten thousand square foot facility? Well, if you would just assume, um, ten thousand square feet at two hundred bucks a square foot is familiar for just a facility.
But more people would give more use of that, the little, the small.
Well, if you put something in it, it'd be saying just offices or a building like this.
Made a red center.
Yeah.
Yep.
And then maybe build a, even a little bit bigger, maybe something we could put a pool indoors.
You know, we did, I did just look real quick online to see what people have for teen centers. You know, teen centers, that was one of the things that came out in the surveys. More things for teens to do, and it's been discussed at council meetings and, um, and Shakopee has a teen center, I saw. Apple Valley's got a teen center. Uh, the Shakopee teen center was five thousand square foot facility. Um, it had things like foosball, it had a fifty-two inch TV, it had several things like foosball, ping pong.
I think Montcello actually has that too.
Do they?
Been there, in their.
Um, you can rent movies there, you can, uh, hang out there, they have DJs and stuff like that, if that's the way it sounded, uh, it's all a variety of different activities.
And there's the kids breaking into cars.
So that's something, you know.
Because in the last year, we had the recreation center was just about.
Had that volunteers dinner, that was really.
No, I, I, I didn't hear anybody mentioning any football. Again, it seems like we're kind of concentrating on ball field for, on behalf of us and ten football people. A pool would give a lot more use than that.
What about the, kind of the unprogrammed field space? You know, we kind of have less, number one, but, you know, kind of more of a concentration, option two, kind of a concentration of the southwest corner, option three. I mean, is that, do you think soccer is gonna be, um, something people are gonna use? Do you think just kind of a grass area that's throw the cones out?
Well, that would be.
Hockey rink, but you see those things, like Sean and I was talking about before, the city might be able to build some of that stuff.
Oh, yeah.
And so it would have been a cost of paper, even though it's right there too. You know, the only thing that would cost would be the recreation center, and which most people around the use, if they have walking paths and there's stuff, they try to use it.
What if we were looking?
So are we just doing the bottom half of option three?
That's what I was gonna get to next. What if we were just looking at higher dollar program elements? Like roadways or civic center or, let's say, ball field types of things, or maybe a regional playground. I mean, what? How do I phrase this? What would you have to have as montross? Do you think comes kind of, we have to have that? Doesn't have to be in a spot that we have it, cause we can, you know, move it around, but what would be something you think we have to keep out of these three? And it could be something that's not even showing up here, I mean, I'm not gonna throw anything out. I mean, it sounded like the civic center of some form that's more universally appealing to, you know, more population is something, is kind of what I'm hearing. Which may or may not include a, you know, pool either indoor or outdoor. What other program elements?
I think we should keep the part on, the unprogrammed part where it says possible hockey rink and possible soccer.
Like.
We should, I, I think something should stay in with that, because I think putting a hockey rink in town at some point would be a good thing.
We've had that question for a long time.
Yeah. You know, I don't know if you could leave up the boards year round or something, cause I know they're expensive to get, but.
The kind of like Buffalo does, they use it for soccer, in the summertime, they use it for the player.
And I think if we had a nice soccer field, I know Buffalo's been like overwhelmed with soccer, um, a lot of times they're out of field space. We have one, but it's not that great shape. I think if we actually had one that was built the right way for soccer and that they knew it was here. You know, when we had, when the Little League got so big in Buffalo, they used our ball field as a field, you know, for, for actually come, well, they had like games down here, you know, they had the Buffalo teams come to play here. I think if we had a soccer field, they would probably use it, the community at or someone like would probably use it. So I think as far as keeping an area that can be soccer field, build a soccer field and a possible hockey is something that we should keep in.
I do too.
I hear maybe, maybe the tennis courts made sense.
Yeah.
In this area.
Yes, basketball court, that makes sense. We talked about a bigger playground area, more regional size.
So it's kind of sounding almost like the one is the may not be it, or maybe are must, you know, must keep. Or possibly the.
I think we, I don't think we should get rid of them. I think they should stay.
They may just.
It's been phase two or phase three.
I think the road is kind of part is a vital asset. I think the road, uh, option three is a main asset that we should keep just for being an artery to the park for accessibility for everyone.
Sheriff's Hammer, the England.
And then if we do do future phases, we know the road's there, we can plan accordingly around it.
My parents can play soccer and baseball in Rochester, the field somewhere in Mass. And I really appreciate the smaller roads with the speed bumps, but, uh, the roads going through the park so that they're a small park, you know, accessible. Closer to the, you know, rather than the block and a half mark.
With all your.
And it's, it's okay once they like to pay, but when it's raining and it's snowing.
Or a hundred degrees.
Yeah.
Well, even if you wanna bring somebody out, an elderly person, to watch the game, you're, you're right there and not trying to push it off the street and on wheelchair or something.
I like that too.
I really too also am quite impressed with, uh, playgrounds in the two different areas on the, on the third one. Because there's always a ton of little kids there, parents don't have any place for them to go play while they're watching baseball or soccer. And I thought that was a pretty cool idea, to have the playgrounds there, for, for their, the parents can sit in the leaders and still see their, other kids will look to this play.
I, I bet that kid that I'm always kneeling at, so.
Yeah, I think that's a real good point though. I think the location at playground is perfect, because there's almost a bunch of kids that need something to do during the ballgame, so.
I mean, unless the city grows more out that way, isn't this really at the end of town? What about people who live on the other side of twelve?
This is, this property, we've got to tax forfeiture, so we don't have this kind of land anywhere else in town. You know, I don't, I don't necessarily dispute who would be.
It just seems like perfect, right. It could be, it could be just a little bit far. I mean, you're spending a lot of money on something that seems to be a little bit outside of town. And for people who live on the other side of twelve or down in the trailer park, wherever, whichever way, I mean, it just seems like it could be, I mean, really only specifically for this particular neighborhood. Because everyone else is gonna have a distance.
What else you propose putting into town? My son lives in Rochester, it's a twenty minute drive to his house, to the soccer field, and he loves it.
I was gonna say, is that, you know, when you look out further, like twenty years, thirty years.
Well, hopefully it'll take a.
The city has annexation agreements with all the townships and actually out to one oh seven pro foot, almost all the way to twenty-five. So, you know, the day will come where the town won't grow that much, and then this really will be.
But won't it be outdated by then?
In the center of town, but the property will be there.
The, it being the, being it's a tax forfeiture, if we don't do something with it, we'll lose it.
Stale data. Here you get out.
What would they, what would you need for like a golf range out there?
Like a regular golf, golf course?
No, just a.
Talking like a.
Oh, range.
Sort of cutting green or something.
Yeah, it could be put up in the northwest corner there and that.
I would think that'd be something that could be done really easily at low cost for interim use, you know, maybe if you decide not to do this section anyway.
Or if it's not a baseball field, but it's a softball field, you get, you know, you potentially get more space.
What do you mean for ground range, three hundred feet?
Oh, that's a hundred yards, that's only two hundred feet. I think you're all.
Yeah, um, okay. Yeah, I mean, that's like, that's a potential user.
I think even looking at any of these, it seems like people like option three. I think we need to keep in mind that this can only face the, it's not like the, the plans are there ready for when the city is ready for that. I mean, I'm, I'm a huge baseball fan, and I know those baseball parks like in Delano and Kokato draw a lot of people to the town.
Yep.
And also two years to know.
Maybe, maybe montross, I mean, I'm thinking about montross, by the way that, that Benfield building is way on edge of town, that whole complex. So, and, and they draw a lot of people, and I think part of it is the easy parking, you know.
And they don't even have enough parking, you know, tarps are.
Right, but maybe montross right now is not quite ready to that chase ball field, but will be in two, five, ten years.
That's what we.
Now, the space will be ready there when it's.
Ready, right. And that's what we talked about.
I think it's important to remember that, that there's gonna be phases for this.
Absolutely, yeah.
Justin, do you wanna?
Yeah.
Let's look into that.
Yeah.
Um, you wanna?
So.
I simply like the, the versatility of this land, meaning that there's so many different things for everybody.
Especially the one like number three, the road going through, because there's a lot of things.
I'm gonna pull this up a little bit, sir. So, we took a stab at a couple of different possible phase one options, and I know there was some discussion, um, about the baseball field. So, uh, you did, in your packets, include a phase one option for just the ball field, assuming that that would be the first portion that one built. Again, it was just an assumption, you know, how, how are we gonna say I'm gonna do it? Uh, so for a different change of pace, we did develop this one after your packets already helped, uh, for a phase one option. This one, um, would take the approach of building a community center slash civic center slash multi-use facility first. Um, with that, this being the backbone, um, of, of the park essentially, as well as constructing through road all the way through the park. The thought, the thought process is the advantage of doing this would be, A, your civic center facility is, is available three hundred sixty-five days a year. Pretty much any yard or facility out here are very limited in, in all seasons, so, so you get more use out of it that way. The other thing that, that Sean mentioned is, you know, he's, his crews have done a lot of park construction already in town. And there's potential for them to do more of that if they have the time and resources to be able to do it. With putting in a, a facility like of some sort down here and putting, especially putting the roadway all the way through, actually the roadway is already built up to this. Right here, you know, uh, so it's from here off through here. But with establishing that roadway, getting that built, then, then the backbone is there, um, for Sean to do more bits and pieces. You decide in a year that everybody really wants a basketball court for some reason, or really wants another tennis court. Sean, you do some grading, like grades are somewhat established there because the road's in, the curb's in, um, you know where you're gonna be, and you can grade on the site for a tennis court. Maybe you can call Hall in the gravel and, and have somebody pave it.
Will this be well lit along the, the back nine line, people eating out?
Lighting would have to be part of, I mean, that'd be something that we consider, yes. Yeah, you'd have to light the roadway, um.
It'd have to be well lit, because it's.
Um, you know, a couple of things that I, that I was thinking about when I, I pulled up, I mentioned I pulled up a couple of teen centers. Shakopee, I looked at, I looked up at Apple Valley, just the website, the first one that came up. I think it was Shakopee or Apple Valley, I think it was Shakopee, not, not even Apple Valley. They're, they're, they referenced how many facilities are within a close proximity of your teen center. And I thought that, you know, that, that would be really nice if you have a teen center down here where people can hang out and play Nintendo or, or play Playstation, not Nintendo. Dave, myself, here, holy cow. Why don't we make it a target? But, but, uh, you know, doing, doing stuff in there, then they wanna go out and play a, play a game of basketball quick, or play a game of basketball, they're hot and tired and wanna come in and rest for a little bit. Or they have a group of friends and they wanna, someone to do this and someone to do that. But it would, uh, it would provide a nice facility and I think a really nice park atmosphere to have all that stuff right in that area. Obviously, you're looking long term down the road here, but, but that just sounds like, man, that would be really, really kind of cool.
You know, as you say that, I'm thinking, you know, Ray County is always looking for a, a place for a small satellite office. And maybe we could work something up with them, so they pay a little rent to help offset some of the costs, you know, that many.
Look for a satellite facility for the sheriff's office?
Yeah, they have a couple around the county and.
They kind of use the fire office back here, but it's not really a dealable. They kinda use the fire office back here where it's not really a dealable.
That sort of keeps the kids on the street and.
There would be nice, that's a sheriff's.
That keeps the kids on the street and they're a.
Yeah, yeah, definitely. I mean, we have a future fire station and it's, the fire department is not a big fan of putting something out there right now.
Yeah.
When we were growing really fast.
We'll have the space. We'll have the space.
When we were.
When they come around to it, it'll be here.
Right. When we were growing fast in a lot of the past, primary classes are coming in, that was a big talk. Our department was. We might have to look at a fire.
On those dates, that's all they wanted to talk about was what were you guys doing?
Well, now that it's slowed down, I think they've kinda dropped it. I mean, it was big talk for quite a few years, you know, four or five years it was. That's what they talked about because we were growing so fast that direction. They were worried, but.
I'm trying to look at. I'm trying to look at that, you're just looking at what you need to know.
Um, there's all, and this would probably, you know, if, if, this was something you decided that you really like and like some sort of facility down here, we'd have to, we have to further define what are the long-term uses of that facility? What do, what do you wanna plan for? Because if you do something like this, we build the parking lots now or some sort of parking lot, you know, and you'd really have to start narrowing in on, on this block. And what do you wanna plan for in the future? Or what, what do you want that, what do you want that building to have? Do you wanna have city offices in there in the future? You know, if you have a teen center in there, it's gonna have to be manned somehow. You're gonna have to have restrooms in there, which would be, that, that's another advantage of building this first is you could have restrooms right in there that could be used for the, some of the park amenities and you won't have to build restrooms right off the start.
That was a stupid question, but.
Yep.
You know, when they used to build the schools, like when they built the middle school in Buffalo, it was pretty small to start with, what's now the middle school. And they had what they called, like their knockout walls where they could expand, that's where they ended up putting the pool in because they were able to, I mean, they, they built it.
For it later on.
Yeah, they built it with the intent that they would be able to add on. Is it something you can, I mean, can you do that with something like this? Can you build a building with the intent that it would be able to, I mean, it's not always gonna be this big that you can eventually.
Well, you'd wanna do that.
Be able to.
Which way would you wanna build in the future and not make that your support?
Right.
Go all over.
That's, that's what I mean, it's that.
Kind of phase, not only phase the park, but maybe phase the structure.
Right.
You know, we built something now that we have a teen center stuff in and then as we go on, if the city starts growing and they, you know, we do.
Want a tiny mall and a gym.
Yeah, or if they want that, you know, if they do wanna do it, you know, you can, you can, you can at that point and.
I mean, it may, it may be something even that you would, you know, the single story to the two, if you put one story in, does it structurally can support expansion out?
Sure.
So, given that, that capacity depending on ten years from now, twenty years from now, what the community might be.
So you can start out affordable now and add on to it.
Cause that Monticello has a first floor gym and a second floor like track and, and, you know, lifting, you know, equipment.
Ten thousand square feet really isn't a lot.
No, it's not particularly.
It's pretty small. You just look at this building, like I said, this, between the fire bar and that whole thing, I think it's somewhere between, I thought ten to eleven thousand square feet, so. Two restrooms and maybe a tremendous jump from opening up, though. Oh, absolutely.
Yeah, it's like ten, eleven thousand, when you build that fire bar, when you stand it, look, it's actually.
Pretty big, yeah, yeah. Yeah, you open it up like that. A fire bar is definitely a desperate, you know, training facility because this is in use a lot, so sometimes they get kicked out of here.
They want this. They wanted it for a long time.
Well, that, either that or you're gonna have to, they're gonna construct, they're gonna go this way or up.
Once they go out that way on that corner, they can build their training center and upstairs add their offices or meetings. It's very, but if this is, you know, if this, if this stays up whole out there, they could have this. We don't have to worry about the kitchen.
That's what I was thinking, you just go back, thought out of your.
Um, so do you have the other phasing options in your package there?
Yeah, so what are you doing?
We just, so the other one for option three, we've had talked about before, is if you did wanna do the ball field first, which I'm hearing is probably not the case, but if you did, for option three, you can build roadway up front here and, and do this. And again, this can be phased in, into as well the ball field. So, as far as cost, we did not put any sort of cost together at all for the, for the civic type center facility other than what I'm giving you for a per square foot cost. Somewhere probably budgeting that figured out to a hundred dollars per square foot. This we did put in, do a roadway up here, a parking lot and ball field, all-inclusive, lighting, fencing, drain tile, backstops, irrigations, you know, make a really nice facility. You're talking upwards of one, one, one point three million. So, this and that, what, this one? Yeah, you had a ten thousand square feet, you said that two hundred bucks is two million, plus that as well through the roads.
We could actually put that ball field in for probably like four hundred thousand if we were to.
Yeah, we could do, we could take out the lighting, you know, right away, you could.
Take out some of the fencing, maybe you would. Well, let's do the, you could.
Oh, concession restroom is also included in that. We had, you know, two to, two, probably two hundred, three hundred dollars in there for that, so.
Do we have right away on that access road?
No. Not that east west.
Oh, because that cost them their.
That's not a, that's a cost.
It's not, but if you have a willing, if you have a willing seller, it's not a huge cost in relation to the.
I have a note on this.
One. Yes?
A rattle of the lane, without this part phase one, just a rattle of the lane, did you put all the way through one end to the other? Would that be considered improved or just a bit that came out of that?
No, I don't know the details, Sam, but I should.
Oh, absolutely. I don't think.
I mean, if you got a master plan that you're building a road through and you're saying you're gonna build this stuff, I can't imagine that.
They're really gonna define a park and what, you got a road going through it.
Both in space and it's parked.
Yeah, you gotta go green space.
Well, and I don't know what it costs to build like even like a tennis court or a basketball court, I can't imagine it's that. Couple, it would be a hundred thousand even? I don't know.
Can't imagine.
It's not that hard.
There you go.
The basketball that goes down, I don't know, you know, how big that is.
Whatever.
Your teacher built a lot of fields. And a lot of your boards are there. And there are, it's down, it was, it's, it's, there are thousands of them, I agree.
Yeah, but they're old one, they're, they, they, they offered you this, you didn't actually put it. That was what ten years ago.
Their old one, yeah. In, it's the indoor one. They, they, they still have the outdoor one over there? Do you have the outdoor one behind you? You said one of, in the line of park, or it's called by, is it Park View? What's it?
I started this time.
Oh, no, no, no. Up, you know, by the, by the service center and the Park View. Oh, well, that is cool, they used to have that in Volvo there.
There's one behind me, I don't know why you want me to always find out.
Yes.
I don't remember, it's called, I don't remember, it's down by the last. Is that one of those, you know?
It's hard to straighten.
Park View, they have, they have. Part of the old playground. Maybe Justin would know, they have an extra set of hockey courts and volleyball.
I've been heard of it, I haven't seen anything from grass emails.
Cause I would think that'd be an easy thing to, you know, if the class of yours is alive, I would think it'd be easy to do the grading.
Yeah, yeah.
You could do more study and I'm sure. Well, if compared to building something else, the hockey ring is free.
You know.
Or it's small.
And you could do it, a football field and stuff.
I was just gonna say, if you did build, you know, that, having a hockey ring here would be, it's not. Right beside it.
You'd have a lot of room there.
That business would be here.
Or me, yeah, that's fine. Or, I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm that sports mom right there. So, I'm, I should have an input on that.
That's why I directed it at you.
And actually. You got a lot of hockey, had you.
I think you're, I'm nineteen years in, you know.
But you know, we looked at the demographics of Montrose and there was a lot of, you know, there's a lot of little kids in Montrose. And those kids are gonna be growing up.
That's why I thought the hockey ring and the basketball court and the tennis courts are probably a big thing.
The soccer field and.
Driving routes are a big, a big. Driving routes are a good.
All of the cross are just taking off like crazy.
Yeah. And you could, you could use that one that same field, all them sports.
Right here.
Cross, yeah. Cross, it's the same as a soccer field.
It's similar. Dimension of lacrosse.
Ball.
That, rugby, dimensions are, are, are at least. I could, I could check on those too. Something else we can do is dash out. So, if we're, it sounds kinda like we're looking at something similar to option three. Trying to make out, heading down that final graphic. What changes do we need to make? What we have shown minus the pink. I'll just go to the playoff. To, uh, to basically to make that work for, I guess, kind of as an initial plan for the city, but then also, you know, if there are any funding, if there are grants or anything throughout or something, like you could include that.
I thought we were talking about the softball field there, shifting that further to the east.
Yeah, we talked about that, right.
So that way we make a bigger regional park.
Right. Playground.
Yeah, playground.
And then the rec center itself, switching that facing highway twelve, that would be different.
Yeah, and using the rec center layout area from option two, because that puts you, one next to the road, so it's pronounced, but then it also gives room for extension going north.
Making sure that it's big enough for future growth.
So he's not gonna be rotating, he's actually changing.
Yeah, putting it back here.
Is that, is that, I guess consensus kind of agree with all those?
Now, Sean, you say about building that, the center close to the road, you mean the road that's gonna be the, in the park?
No, closer to County Road twelve.
That'll be further away from the hockey and.
The road.
That is true.
You'll have the park in Washington.
That was what we discussed the other day, so.
Now, what we discussed is, that would, that would add more visibility and drive it back to County Road twelve that, hey, there's something here. What's, what's that, let's check it out.
Which one has more option for growth?
It all kind of depends on where you may have any parking. Probably having it closer to the corner of Aspen and twelve, just because you don't have to fight a potential parking lot ingress, egress to the north or somehow along that, it's gonna be somewhat heavy. But if you, if you kept it on that side, then you would have more growth to the east from that. If you wanna keep it so you can grow, so be able, of more of the plastics in your building. Whereas the other one, I think you could kind of put it in that area with a kind of a gray, if your right thing was kind of short and south of.
Exactly, we should actually position something like.
The one thing about that would just be making sure that, depending on what goes in that, that the, whether it's, you know, depending on what time it was, the dirt be. And the parking of that, that's what they. So that it's not, you know, approaching down from the area that we're coming into, so that the property is south. So.
What do you think, I know the younger kids like.
Build it, they will. So I, I like this because to me it seems like less of an impact on the.
We can do any of that.
On the neighborhood. Have it closer to Highway twelve and not, not across the street from the neighborhood.
Sure.
Option two or.
Kind of, yeah, kind of on five options two, yeah.
You're talking about location of the building?
Correct.
Of course, then, would that make a front of the building, where would the front of the building be?
It kind of depends on.
Cause you wouldn't have access out of twelve, off of twelve. So you're actually, your front door would be off.
Probably.
Part of the.
But you could still set up, actually, so that it would be face, you know, that intersection. Some people, from the trail, you know, if you have bike paths or something, other people use the trails in that, from that east.
I would think the front door on the basketball lane and the back door on the parking lot. I mean, if we're looking at the option two one. Cause you have a long way, I mean, even though there'd be no necessarily parking there, but a front door on, I, I don't.
Yeah, I mean, what, do they, do they depend on how you set it up? What you'd probably do is you'd set up the, similar like a downtown type of facade, where you'd have that facing twelve and Aspen. You would enter from the back, but that perceived front would be the public side. But both would be set up, so, you know, both are nice, it's just that you'd want it set up so it's. A civic, a civic.
Is there anything in option two or one that you see in old option that's not in three that you think? What did, what do we have eliminated on option three, Josh?
Um, extra, extra ball fields.
Extra ball fields.
Um, we've got extra, so we, uh, only, there's only one basketball court, I think, in three, there was two in.
Yep.
I think you dropped out some of the soccer courts.
Soccer, we have, we have, let's see, we have basketball court, where else we have basketball?
Just wish you had basketball now is.
Right here.
Right out by the Jackie B's and the parking lot, so we're.
You know, it's really the main thing was the soccer and the, well, and the, the, uh, metal space on the periphery. You know, it's so far bad, it's just not, there's more in option two than there is in three.
There's more tennis courts than option three, it's cracking people.
Back, you know, two tennis courts and maybe two basketball, and that's possible too.
But you wouldn't be able to get any league play there if you only had two courts? I mean, I'm not sure what your plans are for all of these things, but I mean, if you want to, if you, if you market it or you wanna have any ongoing activity, you'd wanna have league play or something where you'd need at least four courts.
Type of basketball.
Tennis.
I guess I'm not sure if they have.
But they're about to cross about a million dollars to build a new.
Well, it's.
Correct. And. And in some instances, you can do a basketball on top of the tennis. A great court, if you have a shared use. It's just depending on who's using it and when, if there's a conflict on it. But that's, you know, it's a potential possibility too.
How much are the, the, the baseball fields, how much do they have? Is that every night over?
Cover field?
Yeah.
When I do Thursday?
Six weeks. Are they playing over here too then? At the. At the school?
Yes, the little, the little, okay, it's worked.
And there wasn't enough space in it right now?
Literally, football is playing over here.
Yeah, it was here and playing, it's like.
The, the football's aligned. Yeah. So like it was third through fifth grade at cover field and then first through second.
There was, uh, there wasn't any complaint about what should we, uh, or another field to have yet?
No, cause we only had to go to Buffalo like. Four times, just to make it fair.
Oh, right.
Not, not, cause of, not enough space, just to make things.
That.
Did they use that little field out there, rolling metal spark?
No, I think just for practice.
I don't think they made it over there.
We just use cover and, uh, the school. Do you know the teens use it for practice?
Yeah. Well, the reason I'm asking, because phase, phase one had three. Well, I mean, and we were talking about not needing, not needing three or even nothing, uh, another one at this time yet, so, you know, later phase, we can get up quite a bit.
Yeah, that one was really the, not how many new schools and, but do the two turn the bubble and try to keep, uh, the Eagle Scout. And then the other one, the, the potential future, we, we added it in kind of as a, you'd rather have, you know, more of a program, you surrounded them, uh, like a metal space or habitat space. That's potential option.
I didn't hear anyone say anything about an option three, that dog park, is that it?
Hell, I request.
I request, I was just wondering, and that would be like fenced in, I wrote dog park?
Oh, shit.
It's a, it's a work way in.
Just throw your dog in, the dog never comes back out.
I went to a water spring.
I thought we had one of those.
I'm coming down that one. I need, that's dog park. I'm like, maybe it'll get lost, just, it's like a crapper trail.
What about the location of the procs park?
Just.
And.
I think the location's there.
Up front? Yeah.
Then they're not walking. And you don't need.
Cause they're more hard and crap.
Well, we just hope that they're picking up after the dog, otherwise we'd have a stinky access to your park.
Dispenser.
Council just spent a thousand dollars on dispensers.
People don't use them.
Five.
They haven't been up yet. We just put the last.
You, you still have people who might wanna walk their dog on through the station on the test.
If you're walking their dogs, this dog park must work, the dogs pull out other dogs.
Yeah.
They're on leash.
But there's still a lot of, that probably wouldn't use that, they'll still use it.
Right, but we have leash lungs, how we sell them, that would replace it there.
Right.
Leash free.
Yeah, yeah. And you would say. And the other being that that little station would not be moved.
Correct.
That's correct, correct.
That's the assumption, I mean, well, that's the dog park, it works, it works. Yeah, it works.
It's not gonna give us space for it to move off that, right, down from there. Dog park.
Yeah.
That's the fence and shots.
And then if you wanna open the obstacle, that's what it's like.
Well, I don't see.
Play to the dog park.
I call it out.
I said your guys, not your.
People have, uh, calls in the.
I'm sick of the stinky car, so, you know. There you go.
So assuming, let me, uh, let me get the elephant out of the room a little bit, assuming, assuming that that would be, uh, you know, you'd, uh, look at sort of, sort of something like this for a first phase. Uh, obviously that's difficult to phase into something that you're gonna spend a hundred to two hundred thousand dollars on at one time. But I guess the, the next step for further discussion at a different, different time probably will be is fund over something like that.
Yeah. What kind of funding do we get right now to start something?
We have seventy nine thousand dollars from our LGA. We would have to, you would have to bond, the city had to bond for our project right now.
There's perfect. There might be some. One year for that field, maybe.
For grants?
I don't, I don't think they would, it's three.
Be worth while, check on it.
I don't think for a rec center, maybe two center, but I don't think for a rec center, we'd find a grant.
That'd be something for the teen slash center, uh, same center.
You have to mix those two together, you're definitely gonna find some.
You see, I think about how it, I assume really is gonna be a lot of distance to support those.
I don't disagree with you one bit.
The thing that I, what I'm doing, spending on drill without, and I, and Justin, the other researcher, what reminded me of a bit, boys and girls, but. Like the same, I mean, it's very similar, um, activities, it's just.
Over time.
Activility. Yeah.
More people too.
Right.
If you're afraid of bigger population.
And we could all, we could call us.
Well, you know, we're talking, we have a population of three thousand people, and I'd say a lot of our population is little people under ten.
Yeah, I mean, it, it, it might be, that's, it's effective or something, and I think if that, I mean, if it starts in some place, I think, if you're effective.
Could you incorporate like a latch key program? Our kids, our kids who come home from school who don't have parents, they could go to the center.
Does this school, does this.
Does this go by that?
But if we can get some money, because we are a teen center, you know, why, why not get it and utilize it, okay? If, if, if we try and make a goal of it, and, you know, unfortunately if it does fail, we still have that space that was paid for.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just saying, I don't, I'm just trying to, I think that's, I think that's, I think I don't have a strike in my back, so, and I think. I've read about numerous failures, so, since they started, they're strong, a lot of years, and they're probably just fair, understaffed, on too few activities to end up almost being the opposite.
The one, you know, the classes at Buffalo High School, they had a kind of a coffee shop teen center, that went pretty, pretty strong for a couple of years till that class moved on. Um, Hopkins had the same thing, where the couple junior, junior class, they create kind of a coffee shop kind of thing, and it goes pretty well until those kids move on, so. I, I think that, I think that's true, you know, and those are bigger populations again. I was about to say, I mean, Howard Lake, um, the old Methodist Presbyterian church, they gave it to the Lions, and the Lions have a teen center there once a, on Saturdays. It's open on Saturdays for the kids, and the Lions manage their building, and I don't know, also, so it's called, that is, you know.
But that's not completely.
Oh, they didn't.
It's always.
Right.
I, uh.
But I don't even know how many kids go to.
Right.
Are you talking, like you say, a latch key, you're talking about the little kids, or you're talking like the middle school kids that are coming home? Middle school, you know, definitely, you know, elementary school, that's for the little kids, but I don't know if there's anything here really.
Not for older kids.
There's a place where they could go and do homework if they needed to, or something.
For the boys and girls, Paul.
Yeah. I was wondering about big brother, big brother, big sister, maybe they need a satellite place.
There's a lot of options when you think of something like that, I need to look into for funding and for ideas.
Advice.
Advice.
Even pop share.
Yeah.
Two months ago, now, Ray County told us that vandalism is on the rise here, we need to change the, the curfew from eleven to ten, to try and curb some of that, because the neighboring towns have done that. Or they are in tens, and we have been in eleven, so. They requested that way, give some of that attention to that, so.
Give them something to do.
No, you give them something to do, otherwise it's just, you know, it's not gonna help. But I would like to be able to see this phased in, um, so that it's gotten palatable to, uh, to the public too. Just can't be, oh my god.
But if, if it is.
To lead right way.
And if we can corporate, I mean, if we can do a senior center during the day, teen center type thing at night, maybe there is someone who have funding, I, I have no idea, but.
Sure.
At least, yeah, at least help kind of curb some of the cost and.
Maybe even seniors who, uh, manage or supervise or something.
Bring that two together.
Well, so we need, Justin.
Well, I guess, um. Not really hearing much dissent against option three, so I think, at this point, that's kind of the ideal we'll be looking at, making some modifications on option three based on some comments we got today, and. You know, we can, uh. We can put a phasing, we can put a phasing on there, and, um. Council can, can consider it, and, uh, doesn't necessarily mean you have to. Well, you can still approve the plan as phase one being, being that, that's, that's what your likes are, and it doesn't mean it can't be changed. You know, you're not, you're not approving to proceed with any construction of this thing, all is the concept, I have this.
Are you going to, and if you do, but we, whatever we decide on, you're gonna have a better ballpark figures.
Yeah, yeah, more better process.
So you would want to hold on to the chat?
No. And, and like I say, it would be, at this point, it would be. You wouldn't be avoiding spending money right now, though, I would see it, it's up to you.
Over, just basically narrow it down, uh, one of the options that we'd like, and then you're gonna phase it in, phase, give us options within that phase.
Correct.
As far as timeline and cost.
As far as options with, for like, for instance, a civic center, you mean?
Yeah.
To some extent, we can break that down a little bit, uh, based on some rough blocks in there, you know, what, uh. I, I don't, we're not gonna go through and do a detailed architectural design of the, of the gay center, that wasn't really, you know, what we're looking at for scope here. But we can certainly look at what us, you know, to put in a recreational facility, to have this, this, and this, and that's all it's worth, you're gonna need, at two hundred dollars worth of, this is your cost, yeah. Certainly, but that's a different option there, phase two can have phase. Yep.
Are you gonna phase the baseball field too for us, so that we can see, like a bigger ones?
Sure.
Baseball field.
We can do that, so you just. Like a baseball field, and then like subtract out maybe the lighting, and subtract out some of the non-essential.
Yeah, phase all that, so it'll be later.
Got you.
Yeah.
Would you be willing to look into, or that golf range would be, Justin?
Pardon me?
Uh, what told you, your fridge, the cost of the golf range?
The driving range.
Driving range.
Yeah, we can look and see if that would fit in there, or not fit in.
Okay, now, another thing, Justin, how would you do the grading? If we just look to the south half, number three, there's a lot of lows around.
Well, if we did, you know, I haven't, uh, I haven't went through a topographic survey of the, of the site, I mean, you know, more of a final design type thing, but. If we did the roadway all the way through the site, we would, the way I'd see it is, we do enough grading to get the roadway in, and, and kind of leave it at that. Probably do some rough, rough design grades of the entire site, so we roughly know where we're at with kind of fill and balance, like you're saying.
Yeah.
Level that material out, so we don't end up with a bunch of excess material or vice versa. So that way we know what elevation the roadway has, and I would say we do the, do the grading for the roadway, and just kind of blend it in on the.
Well, that'd be a good base though to move from, I mean, to shine and take over from there then.
Yep.
So we're kind of looking at getting this all, so we can know when to build it next spring.
First, the first time.
Only a year after. That far away from.
How many years?
At least if we have a plan, so we put the roadway in, and, like you said, we could go, you know, get a soccer field.
Or tennis.
Make our basketball court, at least then it's ours, and it won't take away from us. So we don't have to build that, etc. Right, we have to put something on it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We have, we have a plan, we haven't started.
Or even the basketball or tennis.
What's the drive?
Far, that is one of the cheapest things.
Far, what is the drive that came for improvement on the land?
Three years, uh, three years from when we got the deed, and we got the deed like early this year. Honestly, we got our deed in February, so, January, February, or something like that, so. Twenty sixteen.
You have your house with a private roof, there's.
Sure.
Possible grant.
Grant, and strategies, yeah. And, you know, even some meetings about what we want to see in that rec center, you know.
It's a huge project, it's one that's been able to the city for the last couple of years.
Oh, yeah.
The plan, and I agree a hundred percent with what Sean said, we have to come together with a plan that we like, before we bring it to the people. So let them, uh, have their input, their say, but just to come with our own plan and say, okay, in this round, that is, not gonna make progress.
Chaos.
Well, if we, if we handle the plan, we have, this would be outside.
As far as you want to, yeah.
Ball field for the people, or the options within that phase.
Pha- phase, you mean? Yeah, kind of like, like, I'll say, phases, so.
Especially if we're going to some public.
What I said, maybe you could do the point where the plan is here, and then you ask people in meetings, now what do you want first, do you wanna do tennis courts? The park, the, you know.
Baseball field.
Yeah, or we've got this amount of money, how much do you want done first?
Yeah, well, this is what this is gonna cost, what are you willing to?
Yeah, that's true.
I mean, really, that's.
Like that, put the road in, see where we're at, and then. Then lay out there and say, okay. What number are we on? Numbers one through four, what, what do you want first?
Right.
It might come down to something like, the dog park is gonna cost, uh, six thousand dollars, because it's a cyclone fence around a hundred year, basically a football field. And that's what we can afford, well.
Yep.
And that's.
There'd be people that'd be really happy with that.
Checks the box on, and I'm not saying that at times, I'm just grabbing something.
Yeah.
But that checks the box on, okay, they've started development, they're not gonna lose the land.
Right.
Or it could be something as easy too, as if you have an idea of a, a small parking lot, when you're grading the road, you grade it, put some gravel in, as a base, planning on improving on it later.
Yep.
That'd be an improvement, so.
Or if the road is gonna cost us. Let's just say half a million dollars by the time we get from one end to the other, okay, now we know that, and then from that, then we're gonna go from there, but we at least have two years to start coming up with money. And a plan, and fundraiser, or whatever it takes, to get consensus from the town, and, and the money that we need to start the project.
And you know, maybe like individually, maybe there's a group of families that are really interested in soccer, maybe they can do like a soccer fundraiser, or a hockey fundraiser, or a baseball fundraiser, kind of. You know, branch out, maybe you can, to people who can get involved in their specific sports.
Well, and our baseball team, too, that's supposed to be here. That was our, for us, too, that's important.
There might, it would be a group that says, well, who'll pay for the tennis court, we can put our name on it.
That's right.
Or even.
I don't know. Doing some of these.
And I was thinking, Justin, the, um, legacy grant, can't we use the legacy grant for trails?
Trails.
Yeah, our rent's too, I think.
Uh, the trails, and maybe, you know, some of the.
I think we should look into that, so you know. I think we should look into that, so we don't.
There's also, there's a federal fund. Four, it's eighty twenty, but it was just several, we were open, and it, and it over. We do fundraisers that they don't match eighty percent, it's like, we give up a quarter million dollars.
That's right.
We have fundraisers within the federal government that match eighty percent, and they built a trail from a community, a house, that was outside of town, there were two kids that got hit on, two, two, it backed up road. And they were able now to have a half mile away from the highway, they had, you know, an ice trail in the town.
Yeah, those are DNR, right?
Yeah.
But it was a lot of work, government, it was fun to.
There's a lot of work, you know, there's people that want it.
Was there anything else for us on us?
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not, he's pretty, yeah. You made a really good suggestion, actually, Tom.
Like you said, like, like each one of these things would cost, so if you only have certain amount of money, you could say, well, we want two of these, or one of those, and they could just pick, and, and it would present that.
Yeah, at least a ballpark. We can get some ballpark figures, kind of, it just, it kind of depends on how you do it too in the grade, like you said, it's not detailed out enough, and we don't know what the mass ratings require, but you could give, you could give an idea. A hundred thousand dollars, five hundred thousand, ten thousand, you know, something like that.
Those questions are gonna come up.
Yep, yep. We'll do our best to, to overend that, and all this time, we can keep people out.
So what was that, not with the, either size in the cost of each thing?
You would, yeah.
If by having this plan, if they decide to build the tennis courts first, will we know where they're gonna be?
Right.
But also, the rest.
Let's just say we have $60,000 to park on. Where, what's the, that most bank for the parks, what does, what does everybody want first, how do they want things to end? Sure. You know, and then too, like, what Sean says, you know, and I agree with Justin, back it up, with the road there. We can decide any one of those fifteen things, because we have the road there, and if we decide that, let's just say we do want to work on baseball, there, well, there's no road there, and go a different route.
Yeah, no, I say just put the road through, that's the number one step.
No, I'm not saying that, but it makes sense, but it is expensive. And I think you have to give community support for that, before you go and put a road through there, make sure everybody's aware of that, because that'll be the first, first, people think, people ask, why are you building a road through a park and nothing else, but. It's a, it's explaining the philosophy that you just talked about, the reasons behind that, you know.
Right, some parks, though, don't they build roads, and I mean, they're very narrow, you just can't beat another vehicle under by having it a one-way, you know.
Yeah, I think you want, yeah, at least twenty-six or twenty-eight feet wide here. Twenty-four is the bare bone minimum, that's like twelve, twelve, yeah, yeah, that's pretty much touching this ball. Generally, twenty-six is a pretty good narrow width road, you can't park on either side of the road, but there's still enough room.
Well, we'd still have our parking.
Yeah, our parking stalls or something.
And that would, that would curtail people from taking shortcuts through there, there's no reason to take a shortcut through there.
I wouldn't take that much of a shortcut.
I don't see where you'd gain any, there ain't nothing out there. We wouldn't have to, we wouldn't have to spend money to put this top road in, maybe the developers, when they come, they'll put that road in.
Oh, yeah, too.
There's no use for us to spend a lot of money buying that strip of land.
No, not, not at this time.
No.
Right?
Well, we can, we can build a road up to that, we can build a road up to that.
And maybe Jerry Brown, forever to be interested in doing something with us, that's his property, we help him.
Yeah, but when the developers come, they'll take.
Let him take care of it. No, I agree, yeah, yeah.
That's a good idea.
We should pay for that.
Does the, does the council have the call to give you a directive? To give, uh, right first refusal, approval of property, or?
We should do that with her's option, or this one?
You know, if we give right first refusal on the property right now, it's in between the school property and Montrose property, that's gonna make it. Much more palatable for the school to say, well, we want to be involved in this, you know. And maybe even the call of trigger on the future, uh, expansion of the school earlier than what they might have thought before, because they see the direction of our goal.
I'll put that on your folder, gentlemen.
What about adding, uh, strip, uh, who, who farms the land in the west there right now, what was that, did you say?
Brown. He rents it out. He owns it.
What about putting right of first refusal on that property, just from the standpoint of, uh, slithered land in between there? Right here, yeah.
What's, where, we're talking.
Which, would you leave it to sell that, because you need to have, like, developers to build it?
No.
You can have a, our department usually likes to have two exits.
I, I, one here.
This is right here. What's on there? Well, they, they would have two.
How does that work when it's already, like, Ray County has indicated that's where the road will go?
It is here.
Yeah, I think this is the curve.
They could, couldn't they not put it there?
Well, if this was sold to a developer, and if developer did something, we would have control then, we could, we could just tell them they have to put their access point in here. I was more so thinking it was, it wasn't sold to the developer, it wasn't sold to the developer.
They still would have to have access.
No, I mean, it's the same access, they could tell.
They use that for access, right now, they just go across Arlington City's.
Well, they would go across the slant there. No, but there's an access point right out here right now.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But they don't use that.
Oh.
For first, you can see in the area.
Well, well, they're.
Well.
Technically, they're gonna have to use that.
Yeah, that, that farmer uses, that farmer's back there, and he parks the semis and scum lines in there.
Well, I think what Barb is saying, that they don't go straight west, and the area, you can kind of see where they, they dive, and they cut that northwest corner of the blue.
Right through the gear there.
And they cross the.
They cross the, right there.
So they infringe on that northwest corner of the, the rolling meadows, expanded property.
So we're gonna have to change the road, unless you grant us some sort of access.
Well, maybe you can develop that road for us, and then.
There you go.
There won't be a problem.
There you go.
Your lines on here, I mean, how, how close and accurate are your property lines that are on this, I mean, you know, goes right through the Hursaw shed, I mean, it's right along the back edge.
But I just find, you know, kind of a little odd that there's just a little chunk of land right there on the west side of the area.
Yeah.
And it's, and it's.
It's fairly.
I thought this was really, this, I thought this was absolutely bizarre.
Yeah, I, I find that property like very, uh.
I honestly thought it should be further west, but.
Okay, I just.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I wouldn't put a pass on to do something.
Something is weird, weird chunks based off the water.
I've done.
Yeah. Well, like that's a lot of property line.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's just, it's a lot of water, so it's, it's, it's just been flooded and really bizarre, not what this distance, if I know what this distance is, it might make perfect sense, and I'd be like, oh, I just took.
Yeah.
Three hundred feet or anything.
Anything else you need to decide?
I don't think, I don't think we're good.
Okay, thanks.
First, thank you. The direction to go.
Are you going?
No.
We're done with the park stuff?
We're all done. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Then we'll move on.
Option three right now, right?
Move on to Christmas house lighting?
That's a council member auto, I have to discuss about that tonight. You can't wait for snow, right? No, I was, my husband asked me to put up my little lights up.
A few years ago, we had, you know, this decorated house or whatever, and we kind of got away from that, and I was thinking about working it, trying to get it back into the community. And so we would kind of make approval to do that, and then what kind of an incentive, we just don't like it, it's our turn.
And who's gonna judge it, I have a great job, city council can judge it.
No, they don't like us now.
We need somebody to judge it. This is, I can't, I need a little bit of background. When we start, when we have the HCP grant, we have the three different parts of the community partnership, and one of those community pride. And community pride did it the first year, they had the, um, lighting contest, house lighting contest, and they went online and judged. And they all went in separate vehicles, so they didn't have anybody's ideas from each other, and then they came back saying this is ones they liked, and Chris coordinated it all, and they came up with a winner. And we announced the winner, and we had somebody in the community that was totally irate, came to a council meeting, and was mad because they didn't win. So the next year.
That's right.
No, the next year we did it online, and you could vote online, when we had hardly anybody, no abandoned voting. Then the next year, I think Park and Rec did it.
We had four houses.
And we had four houses that decorated, that participated, that participated, I mean, that, so there wasn't much to judge, and I don't know if we ever even gave anything out, that, did we give out a certificate or something?
Yeah, we picked, I don't remember what it was. The house down here, and then this guy over here.
Yeah, it seems like everywhere we pick somebody, we have somebody bad, so I don't know how we wanna do it, I think it's a great thing, because I think it's fun to drive around and look at them, but I don't know how you're gonna do it without.
Keep kidding me.
I want to throw this out.
With the previous lights.
Or consider Annalee, their two biggest money meet and fundraisers are the spring garden tour, or the summer garden tour, and the Christmas, or it's actually the, the holiday season, uh, home tour. So they, they, they sell tickets, and I believe they're thirty, thirty-five dollars for a couple.
A person.
A person, okay, and then they go around and they, and they look at all these places, and they look at their inside decorations, they come in, have cookies and hot toddies or whatever, and look at their outdoor Christmas lights and stuff. And if the people that participate in that get a chance to vote for their thirty-five dollars, maybe that would be the, the first way to do it, and the fundraiser for whatever we want, you know, I'm, I'm saying, let's, let's think about potential, um, district, regional park fundraiser. Right off the bat, and then incorporate that, the Christmas lighting thing, just something for, we can think of.
I think whoever votes should be anonymous, so then nobody needs to take the, I mean, you know, whoever.
Chicken.
You think we have people that, you can have their houses though. A lot of those are people that don't actually live there, they're kind of their summer home, or, we have, we have people that would.
Oh, the parade of homes, yeah.
But they, but, and they all like, a lot of those houses up there, they, that's their summer homes, there's nobody there in the winter, so it gets decorated, and you go look at it, nobody.
They have, um, people that go decorating for you.
I don't know if we have people that open up their houses, you know.
Must be a guy in my neighborhood then, because if Joel there goes out and puts up a bigger beef, then, then I'm gonna look at it.
I'm spelling reese for houses.
But I, I can see the outside of your house, I can see there the outside of that, if anybody, I don't know, they, 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 they.
What you do is you maybe could do more of like a neighborhood quiet thing, I mean, like, each individual streets or little neighborhoods, get them to decorate, so whichever the neighborhood is the best, so it's not necessarily one particular family that can get off or cluck because they didn't win. But do it in neighborhood style, and get the neighborhood to go against the neighborhood.
Oh, I did.
Well, let's see, it's not, one of them.
Well, we tried that.
Just kidding, it's, it's a lot. I don't know, you could come up with some interesting ideas. But I mean, I mean, that's, then you do have, like, the necessarily Jones keeping up with Jones, but, you know, who could go bigger and better? I like the neighborhood, because I'm, yeah. You're not gonna get just one family saying, hey, what's wrong with my house? Well, maybe do, a neighborhood that wins during Macho Days, have a party.
As I was gonna say, they could have, we could let them use the pizza, their own pizza party, we could give them fifty bucks towards pizza or some, you know what I mean, or a hundred bucks towards pizza, and they could use it. They could have their party here, they could use the pizza for free, and we give them a hundred dollars to buy pizza or whatever they wanted, or, I mean, they could do something that way, and.
Yeah.
That's a good idea, I think that's a great idea.
According to the money for silver barbecue?
Or silver barbecue.
Yeah, like a block party, like, you have to turn that Macho Days.
Whatever they want, it's what we, they want.
But then what, what would you define as neighborhoods, because you know, Rob and I live.
You're the whole thing as a neighborhood.
Yeah, yeah, we're the whole thing, and there, there's.
You could section it up into different zones or areas.
Okay, so if you section it up, we have two, three houses, and one here, one.
I might, I might.
You have to be your own neighborhood.
I think Forest Creek is a neighborhood.
One, I think it's a forest one.
I don't know, and then like, my neighborhood would be like, our field, field, or all that.
You know, maybe we have to kind of like, say, yeah, section stage.
And then Forest Creek, what is this other?
Because it's not you.
It's hills, which is.
Garden Ridge.
Yeah, it's Rockland, Raleigh.
They're by the dish, by the sun.
Right, yeah.
Rockwell.
But by the sun, so they will, like, all of.
But they will have like the original.
All of the ridge.
The original part of town.
Okay, well, I don't know. Okay.
I don't think that's a good thing.
No, but yeah, just do a, you know.
So, I mean, just, I mean, just map it out, we'll just put it on the website, or it'll go everywhere, map it out.
I mean, I think, yeah.
Well, why don't we see what we can do together between now and the council?
Yeah.
I got grants.
Because I, I was like, put your flag with it, I was thinking, and that's the, the whole stuff, everything.
Because that's for now, we're gonna do.
Yeah.
You can buy a home or anything.
Well, we have a, I have a home right now. So, we could get something out by the, I thought, whatever.
Yeah, okay, we can talk about that in the morning.
Okay.
We are blending up prices on printing, I was thinking that it'd be less expensive to print those placards and the brochures. I was so wrong.
Oh, really?
So wrong, so, um, will you grab the numbers? Okay, the placards that we print, we walk into our placards, they're on ledger slice paper, and then on color, one-sided, if you have it printed somewhere, it's like, well, I just did total printing, because that's what we have, print everything for us. Three hundred and forty bucks to have a thousand of them printed.
Thirty cents a bat.
Because of the color. Well, it's, it's like a two or three color thing, so it's because of the colors.
That is, that is.
For a thousand placements? That's a lot, I know. And the, our brochures that we have, double-sided, other. The car side, the one. Our, our tour are like, well, double-sided colored and folded for five hundred and fifteen dollars for a thousand of them. Because it's double-sided. So they're expensive. The reason we want to get. The reason we wanted to get prices is because our copying costs have just escalated because we're doing all this color copying. And we are, we haven't really budgeted for that kind of happens. But it's still far less than getting new printing. So then my question is, do we really need to provide placemats? I, I mean, I, we've printed a lot of placemats and I have never seen them when I go out to eat locally. And we use them for the volunteers dinner. And I think the lions and stuff, I've used them at the community center, but I think we're supplying them to the restaurants and I don't know that they're really using them. So I question if we should use our funds that way.
And then when Montrose stays, does their fundraising, they use their own place?
So maybe we should just stick to printing brochures and then we just have them available at City Hall. I don't even know where else we would put them out, you know? We printed hundreds of them and I don't know, you know, where they gone really.
And it is available too on the website.
They're both online, yeah.
Yeah.
Do you have, we ever thought about doing like a welcome pack?
We do have one.
Oh, we do.
Yeah, those call, those are included then.
Yeah, I believe they're left, yeah. If they are, yeah.
But do we have a welcome, if any new resident homes in, does anybody come around and introduce and give all this stuff to the people?
Yep.
I guess if we have that.
Yep.
Well, I don't, I don't remember if someone comes around, but I know when we moved in, we did get a pack and, you know, here's, you know, what's going on in the city. And, you know, some coupons and things like that, other information about.
Welcome neighbor.
Yep.
Welcome is a company and used to be a company out of Oconia and they were purchased, they were purchased by the Herald Journal. But we provide the, um. The folder and they put a lot of information and we put our information in it and it's.
I still have, that's the stuff that I got.
Yeah, we can make sure they got our brochures. But I think, I think they need, I think I recall. They need more stuff. And we can make sure that we do. Okay, so, and I would just say that we'll just stop doing those placemats unless it's a function where, where we'll be using them other ways. I think, um, the Relay for Life, um, ones that were in here on Montrose Days. But we, I think they use them, they ask for some and they, they put them on the tables. You know, so functions like that where it was like on Montrose Day, where there was people in town. If people wanted for that, I think it's, you know, kind of a good thing to, to make them available for that. Oh, yeah. Or, you know, any, like, once they consent for volunteers to have a night, that was good. I mean, people were looking at it. Oh, cool. So I think those kind of functions, but I've been to Rents and I've been to Jackie B's a number of times and I don't, I don't.
I wonder where, um, Norrie gets Montrose Days printed, because they have it all, probably.
To have the other for doll printing, maybe.
I'm sure, but they have.
What, are they getting your match printed?
Their placemat.
Place up at, um, Litchfield, doesn't that, restaurants?
Oh, for restaurants?
Restaurant, the one you went, where you got the placemat set?
Yeah.
There's an outfit in that Litchfield that prints a lot of them for different restaurants around here.
Yeah, but I think, I think Montrose Days used to do them. Um, then my last item is I had a phone call today from Paul Donovan at Northland Security. We have a bond that is due, we have a hundred and sixty-six thousand. And he has a, um, bonds that Sures, Sylas Sures is selling two percent interest rate, um, until twenty eighteen. And I think that we should do that, the current interest rate is like point four. So two percent for probably years or two. And the reason I bring you to the council is because it's outside of our normal investment, um, procedure. We don't usually buy bonds of other municipalities. Uh, we bought some, we made bonds a few years ago when we earned three percent. And that's, that's what this is, now they matured now. Start of honor. Fifty minutes up to one hundred and sixty-six. So we can reinvest that at two percent. For, we just invested five hundred thousand locally in under four, then we got twenty-four percent. So at two percent, it's much better. It's unobvial, it's great. So I would, I'd like a motion to do that.
Can tell how much, how much are you?
Hundred and sixty-six thousand is what we leave as. Actually, it wouldn't be all of it, because I think also they, they had a hundred and fifty-five of the bonds that we could purchase.
I'll make a motion if we agree with the. A second motion. Everybody in favor?
I, I.
Alright.
The motion carried, viable.
Thank you.
I got one thing.
Okay.
Uh, French Lake Curve would be according to Curver Gutter and Fessin Hills Park starting tomorrow. Bored, go have nothing to do, you can sing that.
Louie, we got, we got an email from you that said you got back from your, congratulations, my love. Clear out this thing for us now, is it different than what we're, we're talking about?
I have a road.
Okay, so we're still, we're going to go this different route. We're not gonna have to go to the fighting zone on the urban reserve.
Yep.
Okay.
Sorry for that.
No problem.
Sean, are we gonna have some further comments? So we can have all that though.
We're planning on it, I don't have any more, so you can buy it. I shall get out there.
I did my, this is funny. Is this a question? Oh, no, we just redid it, there's still a lot for over on Derbyo first, yeah.
Notice since it's, we've had a couple of cold, good nights and days now, I know it's a lot of this stuff on, just up to Everstens. Seems to be there where it wasn't there when it was ninety, hundred degrees, so it's weird, but. I noticed I tried to drive on. Yeah, it's, it's there. Picking it up in my shoes and stuff. So you know where it's gonna go, it's, it's, it's all. They play a little bit here.
Well, should we look at that, because we can, I don't know how, how much it costs, what's the budget?
There's something left in the budget for something. I said every time.
I think so.
We're probably gonna get some other areas to do a little bit of amendments. We get to get this back in here if we need to. Motion secured.
Second.
Everybody in favor?
Sorry.